Meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everybody. We, Madam Clerk, we have Mr. Berry, Mr. Burns, Mr. Stroud and myself here tonight. Mr. Britton is off on business with his company. I'd like to remind everybody to please silence all mobile devices. And if you are speaking tonight, we've got quite a few it looks like, and we'd like to remind you to come up here and activate your microphone before speaking and for the YouTube recording. At this time, I'd like for us to stand as Reverend Keith Barnett from Bridge Worship provides the invocation. Following that, Sheriff Hansman will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord Jesus, we thank you tonight for the opportunity you've given us for coming into agreement with your word. And we ask you tonight that, Lord, the things that we talk about and discuss, that we look at it to be in your will as we lift up your name, and we lift up our voices to follow along in your will as we ask for protection for our leaders in our county, our police department, our fire department, that God, you keep a hedge about them. And, Lord, you keep them safe and you keep them protected so that we can give glory unto you, Lord, in all that we do here and throughout this year, that we come in agreement with each other just as much to show the love and support that we should towards one another and this family and this community. And, Lord, we thank you for all the strength that you've given us, and we give you the glory in it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I'm blessed to witness to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sheriff. Anyway, I saw you jumping up there to fill in the gap, and the county attorney, he got here to do the pledge for us. We appreciate you getting ready to fill in for us. Thank you, sir. We'll now move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion that we approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a, Mr. Vice Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Mr. Berry has made the motion. What's the pleasure of the board? Vote by a show of hands. Madam Clerk, that looks like four, zero. We'll now approve the meeting minutes from April the 10th, 2025, which was a special meeting, April the 21st, 2025, which was a regular meeting, and May the 5th, 2025, which was a pre-agenda meeting. Do I see a motion we approve these minutes?
Vice Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Mr. Stroud made the motion. Do I see a show of hands? Vote with a show of hands, please. There we go, four, zero, Madam Clerk. We'll now move on to our presentations. Our first one is a proclamation for National Recovery Month, September 2025. That'll be presented by Jennifer Gant, the DFC Project Coordinator, Burke Recovery.
(Crosstalk). (Crosstalk). You'll need to be on this side. Is it on here? Around this side. Yeah. Okay. I'm sorry, y'all. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall awareness, and whereas according to recent survey results, the average age of first use in Burke County is 11 and a half, therefore, prevention of mental health issues and/or substance use disorder, as well as treatment, is necessary and effective for people. People do recover in our area and around the nation, and whereas overdose rates in Burke County have substantially increased, overdose fatalities appear to be decreasing, and we're still seeing no increase in treatment rates or treatment facilities. And whereas preventing and overcoming substance use disorder is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally, whereas we must educate relatives and friends of people with substance use disorders so they will be able to implement preventative measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas substance use disorder is a major public health problem that impacts society on multiple levels, and whereas the use of fentanyl and other dangerous opioids, as well as substances being laced with potent sedatives, is rising in the community, leading to overdose and death. And whereas also underage drinking and a failure to properly store alcohol in the home continues to lead youth having a low perception risk. And whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, Burke Wellness Initiative and Burke Substance Abuse Network invites Burke County residents to participate in activities held to recognize National Recovery Month. Now, therefore, the Burke County Board of Commissioners proudly proclaims September 2025 is National Recovery Month in Burke County, North Carolina, and urges all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools to join together in fostering understanding, compassion and hope for those affected by substance use disorders, with all upon our community to promote awareness, expand access to treatment and recovery resources, and stand in solidarity with individuals and families as they work to overcome challenges, embrace wellness and build brighter futures. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion to approve proclamation just presented?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Vote by a show of hands, please. Four, zero, Madam Clerk. We'll now hear from EMS, Recognition of Lifesavers, presented by James Robinson, our EMS director.
Evening, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. Appreciate everybody's participation this evening, coming out. The weather looks like it's declining on us, so we do want to make sure that we say, please be careful on the way home this evening. It's my pleasure that on a quarterly basis, we get to present some lifesaving awards, individuals that make a difference within our communities. And some of them seem like they're really big, and others seem like they're a lot smaller. But at the end of the day, the impact that they have on the lives of the citizens of Burke County, we never know until after everything is all said and done. And I feel very blessed and privileged to be able to stand here before you this evening and make this presentation because this, the last part of this presentation is truly, will change your perspective on a lot of things, I do believe. It does for me anyways. So, as you all know, we work towards all five areas of the, of the commissioners, strategic areas. I think this one does meet all five of those, but especially the public safety and the well-being of our individuals, our community members, and those that visit Burke County. So, I've showed this slide multiple times, but Burke County operates four shifts, 24/72 schedule. We have captain, lieutenant, a training sergeant, and we're going to change this bottom slide because we're working towards two field training officers per every shift. We want to standardize what our care is across the board, because we feel that it does have a very big impact on outcomes within our communities. A couple of really big points for this evening. A thousand people suffer sudden cardiac arrest outside of the hospital on a daily basis. This is across all ages. Ten percent of these will survive to hospital discharge. That's a big impact, because only seven percent of those will have full function back with no negative consequences from that event. So, we do stress early activation, 911, bystander CPR. I'm very proud of the men and women that serve at Burke County Emergency Services. We've had the opportunity to work with over 400 individuals to teach hands-only CPR at public outreach events. We're happy to continue to do that, so if you're interested in that, please reach out to us. The bystander CPR rate in the state of North Carolina is one of the highest in the nation at 42.9%. It's hard to believe that somebody would walk by and not be willing to perform at least chest compressions, but in today, a lot of folks will do that. They will just continue to walk by and not make an impact. So, the first three cases, and I'm going a little bit quicker than I normally do, I know we have a very large agenda this evening, but I want to make sure that we emphasize these particular cases. And as I start calling people's names up, I want to make sure that they come to the front for their moment of recognition. We do have a certificate for them, as well as a challenge coin that commemorates tonight's evening. A 72-year-old male was found pulseless and breathless under a carport. 62 first responders initiated CPR. Patient administered medications and defibrillated twice. CPR was maintained throughout that with a Zoll autopulse, which is a device that we carry on our ambulances to provide CPR so that people don't get tired. As we know, with CPR success rates, after that two-minute mark, our ability as human beings to continue to compress a chest declines, our efficiency declines. So, we have Zoll autopulses on all of our trucks, and we implement these as quickly as possible. I do want to recognize Oak Hill Fire and Rescue had a lot of personnel that responded to this call that were unable to be here this evening. But, Mr. Walker, if you'd like to come up here, Abigail Hendricks, Jerry Baker, who couldn't be with us this evening, Seth Ferris and Thelma Parker, I don't believe she can be with us either this evening. Mr. Walker, if you'll standoff there on the, on the side with us for just a minute. All of these CPR that we're talking about this evening had positive outcomes. These individuals were discharged to home. That's an amazing outcome. We are very happy to that. This one actually touched Mr. Walker a little bit more personal than others, because it was a family member, and that makes a big difference when your colleagues come and the outcome is positive. So, we're very appreciative of that. Do you want to say anything? Okay. On 3/11/2025, a 57-year-old male was identified as to having a STEMI, which is a heart attack. Our crew arrived at his residence, and they did a 12-lead EKG, and they noticed that there was something not quite right. If you remember, on our, our last meeting together, we had Ms. April Traxler here, and she explained that partnership. That EKG was transmitted, they said yes, this individual needs cardiac intervention. Our crew was running emergency traffic down the interstate, and as they crossed over the Catawba County line, their patient went into cardiac arrest. The quick actions of the crew in the back of the truck made a difference. They were able to get stopped, they started the autopulse, upon, they got heart rate back, and arrived at the hospital, and as they were moving him over to the cath table, he went into cardiac arrest a second time. Ultimately, he was able to have a stent placed and correct the issue. This gentleman as well was able to come home. And I, Debbie Taylor was on the crew that evening. Debbie's been here before as a first responder on a previous CPR save, and I think experience goes a long way. The ability to, to work through these situations is incredibly important. And then on 6/26/25, we had a 48, yes, 48-year-old male, in cardiac arrest upon arrival of first responders and law enforcement. Patient was transported to Frye, where he received further cardiac care and was ultimately disped, discharged back to home. And I don't believe we have anybody from the fire departments this evening. I do know that Ikerd Fire Department is also holding a family event for their firefighters this evening, so that's why we don't have a lot of participation there. But the Burke County Sheriff's Office did CPR drowning Creek members, road hiss members, Ikerd Fire Department, Jason Townsend, who's in the back, and Robert Ledbetter were on the crew. This patient too had some follow-up with us and was very appreciative of the care that he received, and it made an impact on his life, so I'm happy to recognize Jason this evening for a cardiac save. If you all just stand by for a couple of minutes. Our next call. This one, I can't express enough that we never know the impact that we're going to have. Commissioner Burns, if you'll get. Logan had just worked a 24-hour shift and was on his way down off the mountain. I received the call and we dispatched units. We had a female patient that was experiencing psychiatric-related injury. She had got out of a vehicle, and she had walked down the trail. If you've never been to Upper Creek Falls, it's an absolutely beautiful place to go. It's got a very large waterfall, approximately 70 feet, and she managed to get all the way to the edge of that waterfall, and she was not in a capacity to make sound decisions. Logan, who had just got off his 24-hour shift, was driving by and heard the dispatch. He didn't have any reason he had to stop, other than he wanted to stop. He stopped, he entered the woods by himself. He went all the way down, and he was the first person to make patient contact. Through his quick wit and sound judgment-making, he was able to talk to this person. Actually, he was able to convince this person, through a little bit of trickery, that by saying her name incorrectly, that she needed to come back closer to him, to be able to speak to him, because she couldn't hear him well. That fortitude in that moment prolonged the inevitable for that individual. She was within six inches of taking her own life off a waterfall that she would not have survived. So, I want to recognize Logan, because going above and beyond, taking those extra steps to change that outcome for somebody who may or may not ever realize the impact that he had, changes it for the rest of us. Logan? Kenny? If you'd like to come up. So, this one here, I added in very quickly. Mr. Kenny Williams. So, we recently had an incident that occurred at our landfill. Mark, if you'd come up. One of our employees for the county was working in her normal, everyday job, and as we all do, we take for granted what's going on, and we start building relationships with people, right? We see people in, day in, day out. We never know the impact that we're going to have when something goes wrong. On this day, on August the 5th, 2025, Kenny was waiting in line to go across the scales to be able to drop off some debris. Kenny, you work for Glen Alpine, correct? While he was waiting, he noticed a little bit of commotion that was going on up at the scale house, some people getting out of the way, moving around, and as a good Samaritan, he got out of his vehicle because he knew who was working at the scale house, and something wasn't right. He climbed across the guardrail, and he forcibly opened the window, climbed through the window, and made access to an employee of Burke County who was experiencing one of the worst days of her life. She was having a seizure, and she was altered. Due to the quick thinking of Kenny, he was able to get her on her side and help her maintain an airway. He was able to open up the guard shack. And I also want to recognize Robert, if you'll come up as well. So, 200 Avery Avenue is a long way from the landfill. The rest of us were very busy on a couple of other projects. Robert and Matt Chapman heard the call go in, knew the location, and they responded, because it's the middle of the day, response can be a little bit challenging for area departments, depending on what's going on. Robert, without a second's thought, responded and arrived at the same time as the crew. Ultimately, Robert ended up driving our EMS crew, which was Sherry Mayfield and Kamani, and neither of them are here this evening, back to the hospital where she received further care. I want to recognize Kenny for going above and beyond, for climbing through a window when nobody else had to, and opening a door so that care could be provided for one of our county employees. Mark, do you want to say anything?
I just want to say thank you. That was quick response, and like you said, I don't know where you learned to turn around and side and everything, but that made all the difference, if I'm not mistaken, and thank you. Glen Alpine should be very proud.
Thank you. Thank you. Last but not least, this one here, if this doesn't change the way that you look at everyday life, I'm not sure what actually will. But on June the 6th, Burke County Emergency Services, as well as the Sheriff's Office, Ikerd Fire Department, County Fire Marshal, every resource that could possibly be in the area, responded for a drowning at an area pool. Upon arrival of the first crews, an Ikerd Fire Department member threw off what he knew would get destroyed in the water on the side of the pool, jumped into the pool, and recovered a 13-year-old from the bottom of the pool. Once on the side of the pool, CPR was immediately initiated. Our QRV, Andrew, if you'd like to step up, as well as our crew responded, and lifesaving efforts were initiated. Now, I would love to say that the outcome from this was 100% positive. Ultimately, this child did succumb to their injuries. But I was reached out to by Life Share of the Carolinas. They said the best thing that we could do was emphasize understanding the gift of life. This child's heart, his liver and his kidneys went to change the lives of five other people. We don't know every single day what the good Lord puts us here for, and as challenging as difficult as these situations can be, and if it doesn't bring a tear to your eye, you're probably not human, these outcomes, right? It's because of the hard work, it's because of the individual dedication, it's for making the decision in those moments, whether you're a volunteer firefighter, whether you're a law enforcement agent, whether you're a career in EMS, it does not matter. You jump in and you start doing something. So, I want to recognize Andrew. Do we have anybody else? Hannah, come up.
Tori.
Tori? Tori was not working that day. She actually happened to be there in regular clothes, but also being an employee of ours, heard the call go in and responded to the scene. I just want to take a minute to emphasize, Life Share wanted me to share, if you would like to give the gift of life, make sure that you talk to your family and your loved ones, and make sure that you know that your wishes are. One of the most difficult parts of that is having that conversation with a family. I was fortunate enough to be able to follow up with that, and I want to recognize the lifesaving efforts that these, these individuals did, and I want to thank you all. We've got a certificate for each of you. I know that a certificate and a challenge coin is not a big enough thank you, but a round of applause and a heartfelt thank you for what you do is more than any dollar that I could ever give you. So, thank you very much. Squeeze everybody in for a quick picture. (Crosstalk).
And I think I can speak for all the commissioners. We appreciate all that you do for us every day. It's a pleasure to have a person like Mr. Robinson in charge of EMS that takes the time to write up these commendations and present that to us. And something he said at the beginning was he knew it was quite lengthy and didn't want to waste much, or use much time. That's okay. We'll be here all night to recognize you folks. Thank you so much for all you do. And we'll now move on to our finance department, our update on grant funding, presented by Margaret Pierce, our deputy county manager, finance director, and/or Lindsay Stockman. I'd like to welcome both of y'all here tonight.
Good evening. I'm not sure how I can follow that. We might need to rethink that next time. Good evening. My name is Lindsay Stockman. I am the new grant program manager here in Burke County, and I'm excited to be with you all today. So, Katie, you click for me? Do I click? Oh, so sorry. Oh, go back. So, in order to talk about grants, and grants that we have here in Burke County, we have to understand what a grant is. So, a grant are funds that are given to a person, or in this case, an organization like Burke County, and they're usually designated for a specific person, or, excuse me, for a specific purpose, but they're not generally required to be repaid. So, in this case, we're talking about funds that we've received here in Burke County that we do not have to repay. So, there are different types of grants that we can have. There are federal grants, such as agencies like Department of Health and Human Services, Homeland Security, US Department of Justice. Often, these are passed through state agencies. We also have state and local grants. These are more targeted grants, specific for geographical areas. A lot of the Helene money, for example, where the cutoff for that, we're considered the last county to receive devastation, so a lot of those will be state or local grants. We also have foundation grants. These are private or community foundations that usually focus on specific areas of interest for that foundation, such as education or art. And then we have corporate grants. Those are provided by businesses as part of their desire to support their community and the citizens that have storefronts, excuse me, the citizens in the communities where they have storefronts. Some examples of those would be Walmart, for example. Anywhere there's a Walmart, they have Walmart grants. Kohl's, they have Kohl's grants, and et cetera. So, let's talk about the current grants that we have here in Burke County. We currently have 45 active grants that we are working on on a regular basis. This is about $9 million that we are working on, working towards reporting on, et cetera. Six of our grants are considered federal, whereas 28 are considered state. We, as Burke County, have only provided $280,000 and some dollars in match. Now, that's a great low number, but a couple of questions come to mind. One, what is match? Well, match can be cash or in kind. In kind means it could be salary, it could be your office. Those types of things could be considered in kind, or cash, as we all know, is cash. Now, $280,000, as I would tell you all as a grant person, is a low number. It's actually even lower. $200,000 of this is actually specific for one grant, which is Maynard, because it's a pass-through, and we hold the grant, that 200 is on our books. So, actually, 80% of this is not ours. Only $80,000 is what we've actually provided in match for in kind. So, let's link this back to our focus areas. Our focus area of community advancement, six of those 45 grants are focused in this area. An example here would be the Dogwood Health Trust. We have this grant, and they have provided digital access stations and classes for seniors. Our focus area two, which is economic growth and sustainment, 11 of our grants are focused on this area, and an example would be our Maynard Electric Grant, which is a building reuse grant. So, they're renovating that building to reuse it and stay here in the county. Focus area three, which is public safety and well-being. An example here would be our NCDIT grant or 911 radios. We were able to get new radios from the 911 center, and 25 of our grants are focused in this area. Focus area four, which is fiscal stewardship, three of our grants are focused in this area, and the example we have for you is America 250. So, our funds that we got from the state are specific to America 250. We have the signs right up here at front to celebrate America turning 250 years old, and we are using those funds to help promote. So, now that we know what grants are, and we kind of talked about the grants that we have, let's talk about grants that we are waiting to hear about. So, I have been with the county almost four months. I started April 28th, and since then, we've applied for 16 new grants. That does not include the 45. About $1.2 million we've applied for. We have asked the state for three extensions, so what that means is that during Hurricane Helene, we were not able to meet some of our grant requirements. A lot of people weren't. We simply had to submit paperwork. We've done that. We will continue to work on those grants to fulfill what we said we would to the state. We've submitted three letters of intent, which means we intend to apply for a grant to the state. The state has approved two of those, and we will move forward working with them to apply for additional funding. I've evaluated and reviewed grants with multiple individuals, as well as all the departments across the county, and I continue to do so on a regular basis. We've also created an internal process for applying for grants. I think it's going very well so far. Also with this, which is not up here, the grant match for those 16 grants is zero. There is no match for those dollars.
And I think I can speak for all of the commissioners. We appreciate all that you do for us every day. It's a pleasure to have a person like Mr. Robinson in charge of EMS that takes the time to write up these commendations and present that to us. And something he said at the beginning was he knew it was quite lengthy and didn't want to waste much or use much time. That's okay, we'll be here all night to recognize you folks. Thank you so much for all you do. And we'll now move on to our finance department, our update on grant funding presented by Margaret Pierce, our deputy county manager, finance director, and/or Lindsay Stockman. I'd like to welcome both of y'all here tonight.
Good evening. I'm not sure how I can follow that. We might need to rethink that next time. Good evening, my name is Lindsay Stockman. I am the new grant program manager here in Burke County, and I'm excited to be with you all today. So, Katie, you click for me? Do I click? Oh, so sorry. Oh, go back. So in order to talk about grants and grants that we have here in Burke County, we have to understand what a grant is. So a grant are funds that are given to a person, or in this case, an organization like Burke County, and they're usually designated for a specific person, or, excuse me, for a specific purpose, but they're not generally required to be repaid. So in this case, we're talking about funds that we've received here in Burke County that we do not have to repay. So there are different types of grants that we can have. There are federal grants, such as agencies like Department of Health and Human Services, Homeland Security, U.S. Department of Justice. Often, these are passed through state agencies. We also have state and local grants. These are more targeted grants, specific for geographical areas. A lot of the Helene money, for example, where the cutoff for that, we're considered the last county to receive devastation, so a lot of those will be state or local grants. We also have foundation grants. These are private or community foundations that usually focus on specific areas of interest for that foundation, such as education or art. And then we have corporate grants. Those are provided by businesses as part of their desire to support their community and the citizens that have storefronts, excuse me, the citizens in the communities where they have storefronts. Some examples of those would be Walmart, for example. Anywhere there's a Walmart, they have Walmart grants. Kohl's, they have Kohl's grants, and et cetera. So let's talk about the current grants that we have here in Burke County. We currently have 45 active grants that we are working on on a regular basis. This is about $9 million that we are working on, working towards reporting on, et cetera. Six of our grants are considered federal, whereas 28 are considered state. We, as Burke County, have only provided $280,000 and some dollars in match. Now, that's a great low number, but a couple of questions come to mind. One, what is match? Well, match can be cash or in kind. In kind means it could be salary, it could be your office. Those types of things could be considered in kind, or cash, as we all know, is cash. Now, $280,000, as I would tell you all as a grant person, is a low number. It's actually even lower. $200,000 of this is actually specific for one grant, which is Maynard, because it's a pass-through and we hold the grant, that 200 is on our books. So actually, 80% of this is not ours. Only $80,000 is what we've actually provided in match for in kind. So, let's link this back to our focus areas. Our focus area of community advancement, six of those 45 grants are focused in this area. An example here would be the Dogwood Health Trust. We have this grant, and they have provided digital access stations and classes for seniors. Our focus area two, which is economic growth and sustainment, 11 of our grants are focused on this area, and an example would be our Maynard Electric Grant, which is a building reuse grant. So they're renovating that building to reuse it and stay here in the county. Focus area three, which is public safety and well-being. An example here would be our NCDIT grant or our 911 radios. We were able to get new radios from the 911 center, and 25 of our grants are focused in this area. Focus area four, which is fiscal stewardship, three of our grants are focused in this area, and the example we have for you is America 250. So our funds that we got from the state are specific to America 250. We have the signs right up here at front to celebrate America turning 250 years old, and we are using those funds to help promote. So now that we know what grants are, and we kind of talked about the grants that we have, let's talk about grants that we are waiting to hear about. So I have been with the county almost four months. I started April 28th, and since then, we've applied for 16 new grants. That does not include the 45. About $1.2 million we've applied for. We have asked the state for three extensions, so what that means is that during Hurricane Helene, we were not able to meet some of our grant requirements. A lot of people weren't. We simply had to submit paperwork. We've done that. We will continue to work on those grants to fulfill what we said we would to the state. We've submitted three letters of intent, which means we intend to apply for a grant to the state. The state has approved two of those, and we will move forward working with them to apply for additional funding. I've evaluated and reviewed grants with multiple individuals, as well as all the departments across the county, and I continue to do so on a regular basis. We've also created an internal process for applying for grants. I think it's going very well so far. Also with this, which is not up here, the grant match for those 16 grants is zero. There is no match for those dollars. Those are all just straight grants that we could receive, so we're excited to hear about those. And we have also recently discovered that the system that we use, Munis software across the county, has a grant component to it. So we were thinking in the future, we might need to budget for quite a few dollars to manage a grant system, which can be very pricey. We won't have to do that now because Munis can take care of that for us, which is a great cost-saving. So, some of the grants that we're waiting to hear about. We've applied for a sheriff's office grant. It's called the COPS Grant for Violence Prevention. We wrote this in partnership with the public school system, and this would help with lighting out at Breach Field, as well as enhance safety features for the school system. We also applied for a COPS hiring grant for the sheriff's office. This is also in partnership for the school system, and this would allow us to hire three new student resource officers. And then we just applied for a senior services grant from the Dogwood Health Trust Foundation. It's a two-year grant for a total of $150,000, and we hope that this grant will allow us to move seniors off of the waitlist for in-home and congregate meals, so our Meals on Wheels program. Any questions? Comments, concerns, complaints? Wonderful. My contact information is up. If anybody on the board or if anybody in the audience has any questions or comments, I'm happy to address them.
Anybody have any questions?
Just one comment.
Yes, sir.
Great job.
Oh, thank you.
I've lived in this world a little, and it's not an easy job.
Yes, sir.
My hands off to you. Thank you very much.
Managing 45 grants is quite a chore, and we appreciate you doing that for the citizens of Burke County.
Thank you, I appreciate it. We hope to hear about the other grants we've applied for before the holidays, October, November. So hopefully maybe then we can come back and give you an update. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion to accept the report?
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Sorry, so good, Mr. Chairman. May I see a show of hands, please? That's four to nothing, Madam Clerk. Okay, we will now look at a proclamation for the North Carolina DOT Litter Sweep Week, and that will be presented by yours truly. This proclamation proclaims the month of September 2025 as litter sweep participation month in Burke County, and urges all citizens, businesses, and community organizations to join in this important initiative to help maintain the cleanliness, beauty, and livability of our roadsides and neighborhoods. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor? That's four votes, ma'am. We will now move on to our manager, and we'll look at foster care presentation by him, Mr. Brian Epley.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith, members of the board. I first say that I appreciate, especially in the last two months, where our agendas have certainly been a little more robust, the opportunity to continue to make a point of emphasis for foster care here in Burke County. That is, I too appreciated Chief Robinson's presentation, and that's something I look forward to every quarter. I appreciate Commissioner Burns sitting on that committee and that board to help drive that, and I think this kind of falls into the same boat, where you just feel like you're really putting your time and energy to the right places and working on the right things. And that's where I would like to start, again, just by saying thank you for allowing staff and allowing the team to continue to highlight the need for help, recruitment, and for all of us to just be aware of foster care in Burke County. My first slide, I always like to start with, what is our purpose? What are we here to do? What is the culmination, the synchronization of 28 operating departments under one umbrella? What are we created for? And when you think about, again, what Chief Robinson presented, or you think about some of these foster care statistics and some of the things we're working on, it's not really hard to connect that back to improving lives and making sound, really strong investments into our children, into our community, into our citizens, and that for me is very rewarding, and I appreciate the board's willingness to allow us to do that. So we're here to talk about foster care. Again, in the last two months, as a reminder, we had Jeff Marburger two months ago, who was one more and one less, and that was the board's introduction to his project and the wonderful things they're doing across North Carolina, and his personal story. And then last month, we had Ms. Amber Vess from Mex Place and Support Megan Foundation over, actually in a couple counties now, but originally founded in, over in Marion. And so this month, I wanted to just give maybe a zoomed-out, higher-level overview. And I think it's critical to know that we're talking about foster care, but I want to challenge you to recognize that when you're working on something important, there's a lot of interconnectivity. There's not just one size fits all or working on an independent variable that's in a vacuum. So I want to position this presentation in that regard to say that there's something here in the middle, and I think that's children, and I think they are the commonality between and the link between foster care and substance use disorder in Burke County, and I think they're the same families and the same kids. I think when you're working on one, if you have the right comprehensive strategy and you're looking at it the right way, you're working on both, and it's the same people, and you get good outcomes from both. And then I would also point out that there's an underlying foundational issue that drives the issues in both scenarios, and I think that's economic development. I think that that is the true tie that lifts all ships, and upward economic mobility and the scarcity of resources being moved from people's homes, in a large part will help self-diagnose and self-correct issues, the drivers that lead to children in foster care, largely, as we've seen, about 76% of the children in our care come from homes that have substance abuse problems, challenges, and abuse and neglect issues that are reported. So that's kind of the tee-up to say, what we do matters, doing it well matters, supporting our purpose, improving lives. We shouldn't just do more stuff. Everything that we do, we should have a purpose behind. We should understand what our goals are, how do we measure that success? And I'm just so incredibly excited about some of the lives that can be impacted through this initiative. So my agenda is very short today. The goal that we've been saying at a staff level to try to bring some attention to this world of foster care in Burke County is all about awareness, trying to advocate for these folks, these families, and then a call to action. Earlier this week, Commissioners Stroud, Burns, and Berry are all attended a breakfast with local pastors, and we shared a lot of this similar type information and introduced them to some of our community partners, and that's part of this call to action. You can't be a part of actionable strategy if you're not aware of the problem, if you're not aware of the circumstance, and that's really, I think, what our motivation and what our goal's been in these early parts. For those of you who may be hearing this for the first time, that awareness level is that Burke County has an unproportionate number of children in care. Once they come in our care, they stay in our care for an unproportionately high amount of time. We have an unproportionately low number of licensed foster parents in Burke County, so we have children scattered, you know, all over, really, the region, sometimes the nation. And the longer children stay in foster care, it is clear, without replacement and permanency, the data indicates that they're a positive outcome, so lack of incarceration, lack of mental health, behavioral health, substance use issues later in life. That trauma really leads to a more challenging life ahead, right? So this is the slide that ultimately teed this up as a policy here for this board to undertake, and you all looked at this some time ago, most recently at your strategic planning work session. But here, we're just saying, this is a super-high-level analytic, but the blue bar here is the county population for each of our surrounding counties. The orange line is the three-year average, so this isn't a snapshot in time, this is the three-year average of the number of children in care. And what I'd point out is, we are the only county with this big gap, meaning the number of children in care is unproportionately high to our total county population, and that is what led us down this path of what's going on. Since that point, we've been able to dig in a little bit deeper and better understand why would our number of children in care be higher than some of the other communities in our region? Well, the first thing we point out is the North Carolina average per 1,000 children per claim. So this is a school teacher, a family member, a pediatrician, a Sunday school teacher, a guidance counselor. This is someone calling and making a report of abuse or neglect. Physical abuse, sexual abuse, substance abuse. We heard from, and how appropriate it is that this was recovery month in September, and the average age for first-time use is 11 and 1/2 in Burke County, so that's telling. Sometimes it is the child themselves, but this is someone calling our Department of Social Services, and we're 33% higher than the state average, and even more than that from the federal average, for the number of claims of abuse or neglect. So then you move down to what percentage of that is substantiated. We call that victimization rate, for every 1,000 children. And again, so we're 33% higher in claims, 17.38 of those get actually substantiated, which means we screen it in, we do an investigation, and we conclude, this is an unsafe situation. We need to do further investigation. There is substantiated evidence to the claim. And then this last analytic here is, of those that are substantiated, how many children come into our care? And roughly double what the state average is. So when you ask yourself, why is our population higher, right? The proof's here, we have more claims. There's evidence in the community driving those claims that ultimately yield children in care. Now, I know the board's seen this map many times, and we've all studied it very deeply, but as a reminder, this is a heat map originally, that now has three years' worth of data. So every, again, this overlap between substance use disorder and foster care. Every overdose call that was called into 911 where there was an emergency response is collected through the 911 system and then put into this heat map. And you can see there with the purple, and the higher, the more overdoses in a certain area, the more intensity of the heat map. Now, we've layered that with these green triangles, and these green triangles are child protective services, child welfare intake. So these are children where these abuse and neglect cases have been substantiated, and children have came into our care. And what I would point out is, those green triangles are all over those purple overdose substance abuse issues, right? So this idea that if you work on one, it's linked, and you're working on the other, and there could be comprehensive strategy that I think that deals with both. Here's the same level of intake. You may say, well, what type of substance use has driven that intake? Primarily methamphetamine and fentanyl, and this is the school systems that they are impacted by. So one level further, and ultimately, if we use this information correctly, we should be doing proactive, which I think this board is, hopefully later tonight, is taking some actions to do. But we can be proactive in these communities to deal with some of these abuse and neglect issues and children coming into care before they happen. I do have some positive news, and to brag on our team, I think we have great social workers in our foster care division, and I know this board, and certainly the manager's office is incredibly supportive of their work, and just like Chief Robinson reported, our emergency services and sheriff's office folks and first responders and fire departments, they often see things that most of us don't have to see, and we have tremendous respect and appreciation for their professionalism. Once children come into our care, we take incredibly good care of them, much better than what the industry averages. There's actually a categorization for mistreatment. And then the last two data points here, the first one is about, once someone comes into your care, how long do they stay? What is your ability to move them to permanency? Impermanency would be reunification with their family, or it could be adoption, or it could be they aged out after the age of 18. But we too there have a pretty systematic problem, where once children come into care, they seem to stay here. And you can see that here on this slide. So if we take a snapshot in a static way of our current population, the average is about 1,298 days, so three and a half years that you're separated from your family, and the data's crystal clear that after about nine or 10 weeks, after their separation from mom and dad and child, the effort and the desire for mom and dad to reunify starts to go off. They start to feel hopeless and all those things. And so you may ask yourself, what is one of the reasons that our time to permanent placing, which by the way, now that we know, is improving, but why over time has it been such a challenge? And one of the big reasons is lack of resources in the community. So if a judge, you know, if a child's taken out of a family, and whether it's judicial order or social worker guidance, there's often a checklist of items they have to complete. Parenting skills, for example, or substance, if it's a substance use-related, which again, 76% of the kids in our care come from substance use-related claim, they have to go through maybe outpatient treatment, or maybe it's inpatient, or maybe they have to see a physician. But there's a variety of items that they have to perform in order to even be considered for reunification, and that lack of resource availability in what I'll call our recovery ecosystem, which again, we're going to talk about later this evening, is part of the reason where parents don't even have access in this community to those services. So the ability to achieve them is simply not there. Does that make sense? I'm doing a good job of explaining that. Now, again, some good news, our days to first placement, permanency, and our time, I think we're making some impacts where we can. We can't, you know, we need a lot of infrastructure investment, and so I'm transitioning from awareness. That's kind of a microcosm of the problem and the uniqueness in Burke County. And as a reminder, I said awareness, advocacy, and action. From an advocacy perspective, we're starting first with our churches. That is something that has proven very fruitful in other communities. That was part of why we, when we talked to some of the nonprofits, which is one of the focus areas on this list, each of them talk about the importance of engaging with our local churches and our community and our faith-based leadership folks. That was the point of the breakfast this past Tuesday, I believe. And I'll point out, just as a point of notification, in two weeks from tomorrow, on September the 26th, at 6:00 PM, in this room, there'll be an open door for prayer, and all of those pastors are coming back, and we're inviting even the ones that who weren't able to come, and there's going to be just a moment of reflection and prayer for all these childrens. And that's two weeks from tomorrow, 6:00 to 6:45, I believe, is the time. Don't take for granted the point of emphasis that this meeting allows us to place. There's very important business transactions and very important policy decisions that this board considers, and to earmark a few minutes each month to put this back at the frontal lobe of everyone's radar, critically important. And then lastly, most of these kids in some way interact with the school system. So the school system has been a tremendously willing partner. They have a team, really, that manages these displaced, oftentimes displaced and troubled youth, and they have been a huge, huge partner, supporter, and advocate, and, you know, that's kind of how we've tried to start prioritizing these advocacy efforts. And this is my last slide, and I'll be glad to answer any questions, but the most logical question would be, well, what's next? What are we doing? And I'm a little bit ahead of your agenda, but here shortly, this board's going to have the opportunity to take some action on a few opioid settlement strategies. One of them will be for Spark, and I'll let Dr. Samuel Skupin tell you a little bit more about those folks, but they offer an in-home family-centered treatment that puts licensed clinical addiction specialists and social workers in a home, and it is a marvelous situation to try to identify both the substance side, which by the way, I think has, you know, just an incredible positive outcome absence rate, and allow those families to stay together. But you also hear about a caring alternative and high-country community health, all of which are putting resources in our recovery system that aren't here now, that deal with the root problem, which is substance use, which will have a positive impact on foster care, no doubt in my mind. We're also working closely with the North Carolina Guardian Ed Leitman, specifically Ms. Kincaid, who is just a marvelous advocate for these children, our pastor leadership group, One More One Less, which is the nonprofit that seeks to have two champion churches in each county in North Carolina, Jeff Marburger and his team, and then, as I mentioned, Mex Place and Live Like Megan Foundation, who we heard from from last month. And so the takeaway from this slide is, three or four months ago, none of these folks were on the team. Now they're all on the team. In the next six months, we're going to make a big difference.
Yeah.
We're going to make a big difference. So I appreciate the opportunity to provide a short update on the foster care program and what we're doing in Burke County, and Commissioner Smith, I'm happy to answer any questions you or the board may have.
Does anybody have any questions they'd like to present to the county manager?
I'd like to just make a statement of just how phenomenal it is that to see all of our teams and people coming together in every capacity, in every, you know, when we sat through this thing with the pastors at One More One Less the other day, and different ones that we've listened to, it just seems like everybody's coming together, the churches are coming together, we can take care of these kids, and we're going to figure it out. So we ain't got no kids running around without homes.
Yeah, I think I speak for all of the board when I say we'd like to thank DSS. Yeah, I think I speak for all the board when I say we'd like to thank DSS and all those involved in helping these children out each and every day.
Absolutely.
Okay, that'll move us on to item seven, scheduled public hearings. We have none. And that'll move us to the next one, informal public comments. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone registered to speak?
We do. Mr. Vice Chairman, I would call Kristy Gupton to the podium.
Mr. Epley, I appreciate seeing how far the county has come. I served on the Homes for Hearts Board initiated by DSS Director David Smith years ago, before I ever even had my own children. And it's so good to see how the community has come together since then. Last month, on July fourteenth, this distinguished board became the official board of health for Burke County's citizens. And as a member of your public health advisory board, I made it my personal goal to attend as many of your meetings as possible and relay information I think is important to our public health as a community. As I attended that July fourteenth meeting, I was impressed by the presentation given by the Burke County Health Educator, and as she presented the community needs assessment. It revealed that our community needs resources and investment in the key areas of mental health and substance use disorders, among others. While these are important, they're also very familiar. They've been part of our community needs assessment reports year after year after year. And I think that it's important, with the resources we've already invested, to continue to make progress here so we can eventually triumph over what is, you know, termed these diseases of the soul, right? Substance use disorder and mental health disorders. So I wanted to share a heartwarming story with you about how our community came together without further burdening taxpayers or having to fill out grants, no offense to grants, those are good things, but just concerned citizens who saw a need and decided to just get it done. So that project was an outdoor classroom at Mole Elementary School. The project was conceived by Principal Amber Lackey and her PTA leader, Parent Teacher Association Leader Tracy Stamey. And pardon me for being a proud mama, but my oldest son, Kenton Gupton, who needed an Eagle Scout project in a bad way, saw this idea, and it was just the right fit. So before we knew it, members of our community had written checks, raised more than enough to get started, and Community Leader Jason Henson, a builder and a youth minister, came to the project to offer some project management support. In the brutal heat of last summer, we broke ground and undertook several weeks of very hard physical work to complete what is now a beautiful outdoor learning space featuring a stage and seating for around fifty. Nestled under the trees, downwind from some honeysuckle, and where birds and butterflies make their presence known, elementary school kids at Mole experience nature while learning at a level that cannot be achieved within the four walls of classroom. There's not enough time in this public comment to link Shinren Yoku, a Japanese word meaning forest bathing, to being how inundated in nature heals the mind and the body. But there's infinite scientific proof that that occurs, so I know that you trust that. I'll simply use these last couple seconds to thank members of our community, like Wall Lumber, who contributed the materials at their cost so that we could use the money raised more effectively, and for other financial contributors like the Burke County Republican Party and BNS Discount Foods. And I wanted to thank the Piedmont Council of the Boy Scouts of America for ranking this project number one out of the hundred and thirty Eagle Scout projects that got submitted last year, and for Troop One-Ninety-Nine, who's brought their scouts here before to say the Pledge of Allegiance for all the help and support they gave. So thanks again for your listening to this heartwarming story. I hope you'll find as much pride in it as I do of just a community of people who came together to help solve some of our most pressing needs. And if you'd like to follow that Q.R. code, it'll take you to a little video we made of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gupton. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
That's all the cards I have, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Okay, thank you. And that brings us to our consent agenda. We have none tonight, which brings us to number ten items for decision. And Madam Clerk, I hope you've got some good comfortable shoes on and a good drink of water there, because you're going to be up a while.
Yeah. You're going to be up a while.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board. This is a request to make an appointment to the Council on Aging. Seat number ten is vacant. The Senior Services Director and the Council on Aging requests the appointment of Holly Phillips to fill this vacancy, and it has a term ending November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
Do I hear a motion on this position?
Mr. Vice Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Holly Phillips to the Council on Aging, seat number ten, to complete the remainder of a term ending November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
Thank you, sir. Let's have a vote by show of hands. Madam Clerk, that's four. Four of us unanimous.
Thank you. Next, we have a removal for the America Two-Fifty NC Committee. Kevin Hancock fulfilled the seat number ten representing the Sons of the American Revolution. He has submitted his resignation. So this is a request to remove him from the roster and thank him for his service. And we'll bring back an appointment when we have someone to fill that seat.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. I hate to see him go. He's another good Texas Aggie there, but we wish him well in Indiana. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to remove Kevin Hancock's name from the official roster for the American Two-Fifty Planning Committee and to thank him for his service.
Please vote by show of hands. Madam Clerk, that's four. Unanimous.
Thank you. This next item is a resolution approving and removing Platt Review Officer. Pete Mentor has retired from Burke County, and as such, he's no longer able to serve. Additionally, we would like to request the appointment of Pat Dickinson, Patrick Dickinson, pardon me, to serve to replace Pete. And the following resolution, number twenty-two-five dash twenty-six, makes that happen and is required statutorily.
I'll now entertain a motion for that.
Vice Chairman, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-two-five dash twenty-six.
Please vote by a show of hands. That's four. Madam Clerk.
Thank you very much. The next item that you have on your agenda is the appointment to the Animal Advisory Board. Seat number eight on the Animal Advisory Board represents a large animal owner, and the two-year term ends July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven. We have received an application from Morgan Bollinger. She is a, she owns several horses and a goat, and we would request that you appoint her to fill this vacancy to complete the remainder of a term ending July thirty-one, twenty-twenty-seven.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Vice Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Morgan Bollinger to the Animal Advisory Board, seat number eight, large animal owner for the remainder of the term ending July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven.
Have a vote by show of hands. That's four. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. This next item is an appointment to the Glen Alpin Planning Board, Board of Adjustment, ETJ seat, which stands for the Extraterritorial Jurisdiction. Burke County appoints one member to the Glen Alpin Planning Board, Board of Adjustment, as the ETJ representative. The term is for three years. We have received an application from Tamara Woods Poplin, and we're requesting her appointment to complete a three-year term ending August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight as the ETJ or Extraterritorial Jurisdiction representative.
I'll entertain a motion on this appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to appoint Tamara Poplin to the Glen Alpin Planning Board, Board of Adjustments, as the ETJ representative for a three-year term ending August the thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight.
Thank you. Let's vote by show of hands, please, for Madam Clerk.
All right. The next item is concerns the Parks and Recreation Commission. We have received a resignation from Cody Clark, who occupied seat number eleven, representing the Salem School District. So we would like to have him removed and thank him for his service to the community, and also to appoint Sarah Ellis to fill his vacancy to complete the remainder of a term ending March thirty-one, twenty-twenty-six.
Do I hear a motion concerning Mr. Clark?
Vice Chairman, I'll make a motion to remove Cody Clark's name from the roster for the Parks and Recreation Commission and thank him for his service.
Let's vote by show of hands. Thank you, Madam Clerk, four. And a motion to appoint Sarah Ellis.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Sarah Ellis to the Parks and Recreation Commission, seat number eleven, Salem, to complete the remainder of a term ending March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six.
Vote by show of hands, please, for Madam Clerk.
All right. I think I'm nearing the end. This next item is concerning the Volunteer Agricultural Board. It's a seven-member board, and five of the seats on this board represent the farming community. The terms for Robert Lowman and Jason Carswell have expired. They are willing to serve another term. If we do appoint these two gentlemen, they would need also a waiver from Article Four Boards, Commission, and Committees, Section Two-Dash-Eight-Eight Membership Requirements, Subsection D. Additionally, we have received an application from Joseph Winkler, who is also a farmer. So the requested action is to appoint or reappoint one of these three gentlemen to seat number one, to complete the terms ending August thirty-one, twenty-twenty-eight. Also, for seat number two, to consider one of these applicants, Jason Carswell, Robert Lowman, or Joseph Winkler, also to complete a term ending August thirty-one, twenty-twenty-eight.
Do I hear a motion on seat number one?
I'm making an appointment to reappoint Jason Carswell to seat number one, farming, to complete the remainder of his terms ending August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight, further to grant an exception to Section Two-Dash-Eight-Eight-D of the Burke County Code if needed.
Let's vote by show of hands, please, four or zero, Madam Clerk.
And just to confirm, his exception is needed.
And I'll also entertain now a motion for seat number two.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I make a motion to reappoint Robert Lowman to seat number two, farming, to complete the remainder of terms ending August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight, and further to grant an exception to Section Two-Dash-Eight-Eight-D of the Burke County Code.
Let's see a vote by show of hands, please. That's four, Madam Clerk.
And I think that's it for me. Thank you.
We will now hear from Ms. Dr. Samuels concerning a resolution approving the county lead strategy supporting initiatives aligned with local priorities, opioid settlement funds.
Good afternoon. I would be remiss not to mention that all the folks that are here tonight that have had a hand in planning, researching, and helping put together this proposal that we have for you all tonight. And we're so excited about moving some of these initiatives forward. Mr. Epley stole some of my thunder when he talked about FCT. And what we're doing tonight, it will have a ripple effect on many other departments and the health of the community, because we're looking at things that are high impact and also touch different things that we're prioritizing and will influence the overall wellness of the community. So we're really looking at investing this settlement funds into something that will have a huge impact on the county here. So what we're looking for tonight, what we're looking at is actually two resolutions. The first resolution is a county-led initiative where we're looking at building our port team, which will consist of four community paramedics and four peer support specialists. So we'll have a twenty-four-seven team that will be able to co-respond to overdose calls. And in addition to the co-response, we'll be able to proactively do community work to prevent future overdoses, to engage people in treatment. And so our local data tells us that we're seeing a decline in overdose fatalities, but we're not necessarily seeing a decline in overdoses or treatment engagement. So this strategy specifically will help with that overall overdose rate, and also looking at engaging people in treatments to prevent future overdose calls. Our second strategy there is a peer community navigator, and this person will work alongside the port team, but work with other stakeholders like the emergency department, DSS if need me, the school system. So that person will be a capacity add to the port team, but will also be able to work more freely in the community. And then our third strategy for this budget resolution is naloxone distribution. So this is evidence supports that our strategy of saturating the community with naloxone had a big impact on the reason why we saw fatality rates decrease. So we want to keep that going. We also have the naloxone vending machine now in Bowdies. So we want to keep that naloxone flowing in the community, in the schools, in the jails, and wherever we can put it. So that is the first resolution tonight.
I may add too, but all three of these were reviewed by the commissioner-appointed opioid advisory board in July. The second resolution that Dr. Samuels will present shortly was also reviewed by them, but this particular group here was reviewed thoroughly going through at their July meeting, and they had a unanimous endorsement for this resolution. And I know each of us have talked about it individually, but certainly if there's questions, we're glad to answer those.
Does anybody have any questions they'd like to present to the manager, Dr. Samuels? No. If there are none, I'll now entertain a motion on the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-five dash twenty-five as presented.
Please vote by show of hands. Madam Clerk, that's four of us. You will now hear a resolution from Dr. Samuels about approving provider-led strategies.
Do I have a clicker here? Yeah, here we go. Okay, so I want to take you through this process of how we got here and what that looked like with our opioid advisory committee, and talk to you about some of the impact from this, because this is something that we haven't done before, and we're excited to do to get, to build our provider network. So we opened up a request for application in our RFP process to let providers submit proposals for programs to either start new or build capacity in. So we're looking for that feedback from providers, engagement with treatment providers, to build our system of care here, so that we can start working on that second phase of, number one, reducing fatalities, and then getting people engaged with treatment. But we have to make sure that the continuum of care is there so that people have access to the treatment. So that was really the motivation behind doing this. And so I want to talk to you about the department recommendations, how we got here, and then each one of the proposals that you're hearing from tonight. And then we're going to end with the recommendation or endorsement from you guys of these strategies. So this addresses our focus area three, public safety and well-being, with the goal of effective use of opioid settlement funding, including collaborative partnerships to develop regionally-based recovery systems, so locally and regionally-based. So one, reduce the onset of new use. Two, enhance pathways to recovery, and that's really where we're focusing on these strategies. And three, reduce fatalities. And so June was our very first opioid advisory committee meeting, where we, the committee endorsed three strategies that you just heard. And we talked through what it would look like to open up this process. So on June thirteenth, we released the RFP, and it closed on July the eleventh. After that bid closed, we had an internal review to make sure that all of the proposals that were, we were passing through to the next phase lined up with the MOA and were legally able to be funded this way. So in August, well, between July and August, we met with all of these providers. We had one-on-one interviews with them. We listened to what they were proposing. We listened to their outlook. We listened to their outcomes and their sustainability plans. And we talked through how it fit in with our local priorities. And then last week on the 12th, they came, the ones that were selected to proceed that fit in with the priorities in the MOA Option A and that we felt like we're really ready to be implemented, they presented to the opioid advisory committee on August 12th. And the advisory committee at that time endorsed three strategies to be presented to you tonight. So we received a total of 11. Three were selected to move forward, and we have three that are in the revisit tier where we're going to go back and do that same interview process, talk to them about their proposals, their applications, and see how they might be able to move forward with those. And we had five in the not advancing at this time. So the recommended to proceed, they were high-impact, high-need strategies, evidence-based. We built performance measures around these and created almost a fee-for-service model. So we're not paying for anything that's not happening. A carrying alternative, their program is a substance abuse comprehensive outpatient treatment and intensive outpatient treatment program, SECAHOT and SAIOP. High Country's proposal was low-barrier medication-assisted treatment, an expansion of their program. And Sparks was family-centered treatment R for recovery. A carrying alternative, their requested amount is $300,000 for SECAHOT and SAIOP. And so SECAHOT is a very, very intensive program. If you think about outpatient and inpatient, SECAHOT's right in the middle, SECAHOT and SAIOP. So this is an intervention that a person can use for an extended period of time. That's more intensive than regular outpatient, but it keeps them, it allows them to still be with their families, still work, and not have to be in residential. So it's that middle part of the continuum that we didn't have here. We have providers that are providing it outside the county to our residents, but we didn't have it here being done in the county. And so the implementation milestones, this is an example. I put each, each slide with the provider has this on there. This is an example of how thoroughly we went through the contracts, looking at when we expect them to be doing what thing and how quickly we can implement these programs and how quickly we can see data coming in to show our impact. And so also I wanted to talk to you about some national statistics. So we have Coastal Horizons is an SAIOP, SECAHOT program out on the coast. And they report a 60% abstinence rate after the completion of SECAHOT. So that was like six months later. 60% of the people that went through SECAHOT are still abstinent from using any kind of illicit substance. And then 50% to 70% abstinence that follow up from SAIOP, and that was a statistic from the National Library of Medicine. So you're having evidence-based programs that have some national outcomes here and are shown to be effective. And SAIOP and SECAHOT are also large components of recovery court. And that's a proven method of, so when a person enters the recovery court program, a lot of times they're, they go into IOP or SECAHOT. And so this will be an additional option for the people that are going through recovery court. And then this program will also take referrals from our port team, from community providers, from self-referrals. So we'll be seeing a lot of intake from different places in the community. And this is some of the outcome metrics that we put into each performance-based contract has specific outcome metrics that are related to their proposal and the program that we're looking at. High Country Community Health, their requested amount is 267,305. And they are looking to expand their low-barrier MAT. This is already a very successful program that they're doing in Burke County, and they need some support to expand that. So one of the things that High Country presented to the opioid advisory committee last week that they serve five counties, but Burke County makes up 50% of the caseload for low-barrier MAT. So we need to put some additional support to grow that program. And this is a really essential door to get into treatment. These are folks that are out in the community, walking around, going to places, going to shelters to actively engage people and get them in treatment and then follow up with them. So they'll also work very closely with our port team. As our port team are engaging with people, they will have a warm handoff with High Country, with their providers and peer support specialists for longer-term care. And some statistics here are 72% treatment retention rates in low-threshold programs. And this is really what we want to see. We want to see people get engaged in treatment and stay in treatment. And opioid, opioid use dropped 90% to 41% in populations that were engaged in low-barrier MAT. Spark, I think you guys are pretty excited to hear about this one, family-centered treatment R for recovery. We will be one of only a handful of programs that have the recovery component in the country. So FCT has been widely used by DSSs for a while. And FCTR is a new model that adds in an additional peer support or a person with lived experience to also work with the families. And so what we're looking for here is to see a reduction in the length of stay in DSS, reunifications, past reunifications. And we're also looking at prevention, like how can we have an intervention that's earlier in the process to keep the kids from actually being removed because there is additional support. And so our local data, we had 186 removals from June 2024 to July 2025. 78% of that was substance use as a part of the removal. And so if you look at those outcome metrics, they're really what we want to see as our other priority about reducing or improving foster care system. And so the, as I previously mentioned, the opioid advisory committee unanimously endorsed all three of these strategies. And so I'm bringing it to you tonight for your final approval so that we can move forward with implementation.
I think Dr. Samuels is ready for some questions now. If anybody has anything they'd like to ask her.
Dr. Samuels, will these organizations, these three, be coming here to report in the coming months about their results, I guess? Or will they report to you guys and you guys come and report to us?
We've built it into their contract that they would be reporting to the opioid advisory committee.
But I certainly think if the board wants to plan that ahead, we can facilitate. I mean, I think that's, that's a good practice to have, too.
I don't have a question, but I'd like to make a comment. I see a lot of folks out there in the audience that have put a lot of work into this. And one of them's former Commissioner Johnny Carswell back there in the back in that Southern Baptist position. And we appreciate everything all of you have done. And I know this is near and dear to his heart as it is to all of us who want to see a lot of recovery and extinction of drug abuse in this county. Does anybody else have any questions?
I just want to offer my heartfelt appreciation, too, to the committee, the advisory committee. I feel like they've undertaken this task with a lot of deliberate and humbleness, deliberance and humbleness. I just, I can't, I'm excited about this. It's a big step forward. It's much further than we've ever been.
Any other comments or suggestions?
Just one more, Mr. Vice Chair. I just want to say, too, that out of all the things that I've been part of since I've been here on the Board of Commissioners, this to me is probably the most important thing we're ever going to do in this community, to make a positive difference quickly, I hope. And thank you and all the people on the committee, the advisory board, for, for what you're doing. Oh, and just to mention, too, for anybody in YouTube world out there watching this, the meetings that you have are streamed live, and you can go back and watch those as well, which is what I've been doing. So it's awesome to see the work you guys are doing and the collaboration in the community. So thank you.
I'll now entertain a motion on this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2025-24 as presented. Approve contracts in the amount of $300,000 with a carrying alternative, $267,305 with High Country Community Health, and $390,000 with Spark, and authorize the county manager to execute all associated documents subject to review and/or revision by the county manager, county attorney.
I'll entertain a vote by show of hands. Madam Clerk, that's all of us. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Samuels.
Thank you.
We'll now hear from the county manager on the county surplus, real property, and the update on that.
Commissioner Smith, Mr. Vice Chairman. The first item is for the board to consider repealing a 2010 policy for how we handle surplus property. This ultimately came through a recommendation from the county attorney's office. North Carolina statute is very clear about how a county may go through the surplusing process and how that's to be handled. And so we, we've been operating for some time with a, a policy that's just a bit overly cumbersome and, and, and not the most proficient or efficient mechanism. That policy was adopted September 2010 by a simple motion and vote. It can be repealed by a simple motion and vote. I know each of you have had that in front of you and have worked through it on a couple of other properties and likely seen how some of the steps were, were a bit challenging. So the first thing, this first item is simply a request for the board to repeal that 2010 policy. And, and moving forward, Burke County will simply follow the North Carolina general statute as we deal with surplusing real property. Happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions that'd like to present to the county manager? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Vice Chairman?
Go ahead.
They're getting ahead of me. I'm going to get a couple of them in here. I'd like to make a motion to repeal the policy for the sale of surplus real property adopted in 2010.
Let's vote by show of hands, please. Madam Clerk, that's all of us. Mr. Epley will now talk to us about the selection for the inaugural class for the Burke County Citizens Academy.
There's one more action on that.
Did I skip one?
Yeah.
Oh, I knew this idea. I'm wanting to get that thing going. I'm sorry. Talk to us now about the offer to purchase county-owned property.
I'll be equally as brief with this one. Now, I will point out, there is, at your last meeting in July, we had a proposal to purchase a piece of surplus property located near the Hickory Airport. It's about four tenths of an acre. That original bid was 1,500. This, as a reminder, this board rejected that offer, and we communicated back to the bidder who's made another bid. And that, that more updated bid is 3,250. So I want to walk you through that. But first, I wanted to just share largely Commissioner Barrier had, had asked, you know, made some suggestions and asked how a citizen may know about what surplus properties are available and how they may go about making, placing a bid. And largely, the answer until this board just repealed the previous policy was to follow that pretty complicated, highly mechanical policy. So now we have built a website. It's on our webpage, and it has a map. We currently have these properties. And I think the kind of folks in the back are going to show on our website how one may go to navigate to this. This is an active, interactive RGIS map. If you go to Burke County's website, go to the Residents tab, Surplus Property, that brings up the process, how it works, what you have to do. There's a map at the bottom that's interactive. You can click anywhere, any of those stars or properties that could be bid on. If you hover over said star, that's the piece of property we're fixing to talk about. It'll give you all the information. And then there's a link at the top that will generate a form where you to make your bid, which is automatically emailed to our team so we can process it. So we just took a long process and made it much cleaner, shorter, faster, and, and more interfaced. So, so, so that's, that's kind of the update on how, you know, trying to be a little bit better. Now, for the matter for this board to consider tonight, if we can get back, as reminded, this 168 and 153 statute both govern this. It starts with the board receiving an offer. At any point in time, you can reject any bid. So, so nothing you do tonight locks you in. Once you accept the first bid, it starts a mandatory 10-day bid process. And then any final bid would come back to you ultimately for, for consideration. As a reminder, we're talking about this roughly four tenths of an acre tract. I zoomed out and put it to the far left just to show that this is, you know, kind of proximity Hickory Airport Road. And it's, it was originally obtained by the county in 2014. The assessed value is a little over $15,000. Our total cost in legal fees and back taxes is 2,200 bucks. Daniel Cow has increased his offer by $1,750 to $3,250. And for perspective, that would generate, transition back to the private market about $85 a year in property taxes. The recommendation from staff, the board's options are to approve that and accept that and begin the mandatory 10-day upset bid process. Again, remind you, if, if, if he was the only bidder or if no one else bid, you still have an opportunity to reject that later. But I think from my perspective, the value of that property is higher than $3,250. And, and now with the new interface that we have on the website, we may see a higher volume of potential bids that we could consider. So certainly happy to answer any questions and follow the board's direction, Commissioner Smith. But I, I think that that's a more valuable piece of property than $3,250.
Does anybody have any questions? I'll entertain a vote on this matter.
I'll make a motion.
So I better get a motion first.
Yes, sir, to reject the offer, to reject the offer to purchase real property, read Number 372610 Westview Trail in the amount of $3,250. Vote by show of hands.
Let's vote by show of hands, please.
Sorry, Phil.
Yes, sir. I think I messed up once or twice tonight. We'll let you have one. That's four.
Something for a little perspective that we talked about at a staff level. If, if, if the board were to receive a beginning offer that was 75% of the tax value, that's an additional $7,000 roughly above what's being offered now. If that property transitioned back to the private market and went on the tax books at its appraised value today, a tick over $15,000, generating roughly $85 a year in property tax revenue, that additional $7,000 that this board may garner from that is the equivalent to 80-plus years in property tax revenue. It's a pretty good, I think, good, good way to kind of think through that.
All right, now by gosh, we're going to get to the Citizens Academy. Near and dear to all of our hearts. And this will be presented also by our county manager, Brian Epley.
Yes, sir. Just as a reminder, I know that we've talked about this a lot. This is something that the board prioritized all the way back in March at your priority work session. And you put it on your strategic plan, specifically under the community advancement focus area. And I know it's something that I've talked to each of you about and that you're excited to be a part of. A Citizens Academy really is an opportunity for our community to step inside and be a, you know, grassroots part of county government. We have some pretty simple goals. We want to share knowledge. We want to create engagement, provide an opportunity for feedback. I tell people all the time, and I believe it to be true, local government, like really all levels of government, but local government's different because we live and operate in the community in which we have the pleasure and the, and the, and the opportunity to serve. But we don't do a good job of telling our own story. And we also do not do a good job of providing a system that allows people to give us feedback. And when you're not telling your story and you're also not receiving feedback, I think that creates confusion. And that confusion can often be camouflaged as frustration or disconnection. And, and this is one tool of many. This isn't the, you know, as Commissioner Smith like says, there's no silver bullet. This is just one tool that can be used in conjunction with many other strategies to make sure that we are providing this, this opportunity to foundation of knowledge, engagement. Now, excitingly enough, there was a higher level of engagement anticipated, which I think is wonderful news, super exciting to me. This is our first class. We can be prepared to launch this as early as September the 11th. That's our plan. We would hold it on Thursday evenings from 5:30 to 7:00. It's a six-week program. When we originally forecasted this and asked the board for the, the ability to try to run this program, we speculated maybe 10 or so. program, we speculated maybe 10 or so participants. This was an application-based process, so people applied to be in the Citizens Academy, no different than they applied for all the other boards and appointments that our clerk just walked us through. We ended up getting 18 applications, which was incredibly exciting. And so, this was the time, Commissioner Smith, if the board would like to consider formalizing this Citizens Academy and making these appointments, that will give staff the direction we need to reach out to these folks and get that planning process started and get it underway.
Yes, sir. I'd like to, before we vote on or have a motion on anything, I'd like to say I want to thank the commissioners up here and Mr. Britton, who's not with us tonight, and the county manager and his staff for being willing to possibly entertain all 18 applicants as members of this class. I think that's important. I think all of us see a need for our community to be involved and for us to be transparent as much as possible in what we're doing. So, having said that, does anybody have any questions or comments they'd like to make?
I just want to say hats off. Every day, I talk to someone who has questions that don't really understand what we do and it's not their fault. As you mentioned earlier, we do a pretty poor job sometimes of telling our own story. I'm excited about this. I am super excited to see it launched.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I make a motion to approve the selection of the following 18 participants for the inaugural class of the Burke County Citizens Academy. Dave Beetler, Susan Butterworth, Regina Lafferty, Jim Prady, Shanna Harrison, James J. Leach, Tor Kinkade, Ed Halliburton, Heather Ward, Haley King, Kim Van Sickler, Steve Parker, Chad Hildebrand, Stephen Coller, Beverly Morton, Kyle Burnett, Karen Swaim, and Kimberly Fossey.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Let's vote by show of hands. That's four, Madam Clerk. Okay. We'll move to number 13, adoption of a project ordinance for the HRC renovation project, presented again by county manager Epley.
Yes, sir. Again, I think a project that has been talked about for some time. When I first arrived in Burke County in February 2023, the county had just completed a comprehensive facility master planning with Mosley Architects where they went through and evaluated every square foot of Burke County-owned building infrastructure. And they looked at it in structural codes, meaning roofing and plumbing and mechanical, and gave each of those a quantitative grade, one through five. And I'm very pleased to report that really four of the top five projects have been dealt with by this board. And this HRC, which is really the home for our Public Health and Department of Social Services program, is next on that list. At your March work session this year, after we gave, you know, really an update on some of the other major capital projects like the courthouse, EMS-based headquarters, and animal services, the board took action to prioritize this project. We proposed doing it in a phased adaptive reuse model, meaning that we renovate the existing 62,000 square feet. We know that the school system currently occupies about 14,000 of that. They'll be moving out sometime early next summer. We've already presented to you all a contract with Holland Hammer to do the design and engineering and I'm very pleased to report that we've, we're well underway. We've got that process started. We expect it to take really the design, schematic design process probably through next June. So, about the time we finish that, the school system will be leaving the space and we'll have bid documents and we'll be ready to get the construction arm underway and we're eyeballing a 12/31/2027 substantial completion date. In the meantime, likely this will be the single project that we've worked on over the last three years that requires installment financing. And we have applied and we think we have a good opportunity to leverage an additional bricks and mortar federal grant, which would certainly lower the amount of financing that's required. But we anticipate that needing to be that bridge and that gap. And you really can't do that until you have permitted drawings and you have, you know, all of those things in hand. So, in the meantime, we will continue to incur some development costs with our engineering architectural firm. So, what we're asking you to do is go ahead and establish that project ordinance. We'll move $1 million over from our capital fund as a temporary loan and it'll pay, it'll pay back when we do the installment financing, given the vehicle of the next item on the agenda. But this particular one, Commissioner, is to establish the project ordinance for the HRC project with an initial appropriation of $1 million. Happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I make a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-10 as presented.
Please vote by show of hands. Madam Clerk, that's four of us. We'll now hear from the county manager concerning a resolution declaring intention to reimburse the county from the proceeds of one or more tax-exempt financing from certain capital expenditures.
Building on the action that you all just took, in order to repay our capital program when the financing, installment financing action takes place, when that transaction takes place, we have to first have this, and this is a Physical Control Act statutory requirement, to adopt a reimbursement resolution, basically giving yourself the authority to pay yourself back when you do borrow. And that's what this resolution would do so that in June or July of next year, when we get to that part of the project, we can, we can make sure that that's included in the package and in the transaction.
Does anybody have any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I make a motion to adopt resolution number 2025-28.
And we'll vote by show of hands, please. Madam Clerk, that's four of us. Now, here for Mr. Mark Miller, Human Resources, on a presentation and consideration of updated policies.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to really continue this conversation. I know I've been in front of you several times now and talked about the progress of where we are with our policy modernization and happy to report that we are ready to move to the next step. Like I said, we've talked about this in multiple occasions. I won't spend a tremendous amount of time on it, but just talk through the process that we have went through, went through the policy audit, really looked at what we had from a policy perspective, determined what needed to be adjusted potentially or excluded or what needed to be added, looked at research and did benchmarking, really compared that to some other counties and some other municipalities and policies that they had in place, looked at standardizing our format of our policies overall, looked at things that have been problematic over the years from a policy perspective, and went through a collaborative process to really renew those and get them into a newer format. I've talked to you several times about why the need to go through this process and why to modernize. And there's really three points to this, the first being to ensure that those policies are up to date and relevant. Again, it has been since 2009, since we really took a really strong look at our policies overall, again, looking to implement best practices, looking at really supporting the organization overall, reduce our risk from a policy perspective and be more in legal compliance, align those with our purpose and our values, and really focus on that being an employer of choice in the community. Second reason driving this is to, in our pursuit of substantial equivalency, that reflects that our policies and positions are in accordance with North Carolina OSHA that we have to have in dealing with issues involving Department of Social Services and Public Health. It will allow us to internally recruit and qualify candidates for those roles in those two departments, determine those compensations for those roles, and classify positions in the job families associated with those roles. That will ultimately allow us to be more efficient and effective in dealing with issues in those departments. Third reason is to really move forward in our compensation and classification improvements, which were well underway when I joined last year. This has been going on for this whole process for over a year now, did result in the nut bit of classification and compensation pay grading system. Again, that mirrors OSHA that will get us in substantial equivalency from that standpoint. We can come back to this, but we're gonna ultimately request that the board approve the policies with an effective date of October 1st and adopt a resolution requesting certification of substantial equivalency for job classification and compensation with OSHA. Once we get approval, we will move into the next phase, which is really implementing the policies. We will make any adjustments that we need to, to our operating processes, to the policies that may change or policies that may be new. We will put together a training development, training plan. We'll first start with our department heads and our few leadership roles and enroll that throughout the organization down to the employee level. We'll do, make sure that they know where the policies are and either electronically or in hard copy. And then, we'll also start to include that into our new hire orientation process going forward. Again, with, gives us about a month, month and a half to do some training and be ready to, with an implementation date of October 1st. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anybody have any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion from the presentation.
We have three options here to think about. We can either make a motion to approve, approve and modify, or deny. Do you have a recommendation?
I would absolutely recommend that we approve. They have been reviewed by the county attorney as well and we're in a process, a step where we are ready to proceed if you so approve.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the proposed changes to the Burke County personnel policies as presented effective October the 1st, 2025.
And we'll vote by show of hands. Madam Clerk, that's four of us. Okay, Mr. Miller will now talk to us about resolutions supporting substantial equivalency.
Yes, in addition to that, would request that you adopt the resolution to support that for those substantial equivalency in those two areas.
Do I have any questions for Mr. Miller? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 2025-20.
And we'll vote by show of hands again. That's four of us, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, and I think right now, just for about, let's say, seven minutes, we'll go seven minutes. We'll take us a break so Mr. Stroud over here can go and talk to Mr. Miller. We will now begin our meeting after our break and we'll hear from our tax administrator, Mr. John Bridgers, on our tax collection report.
Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board. For our tax collections report for the month of July 2025, year-to-date, we have collected That's 13.03% of the budget amount with balance correct of $47,867,328.5. Motor vehicle tax, year-to-date, we've collected $534,303.58. That is 9.79% of the budget amount with balance to collect of $4,922,553.42. For current-year taxes, we have collected $7,705,989.53. That is 12.74% budget amount with balance to collect of $52,789,881.47. Delinquent taxes, we have collected $160,175.67. That's 22.88% of the budget amount with balance to collect of $539,824.13. Penalty is the interest. We have collected $36,209.19. That is 11.01% of the budget amount with a balance to collect of $292,700.21. For the overall levy for this year, we have collected, the levy is $54,179,163.76. Of that, we have collected $7,171,685.95. That is 13.24% of the budget amount or of the levy with a balance to collect of $47, excuse me, $47,7,477.81.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Bridger? I'll entertain a motion on this report.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I make a motion to accept the tax collection report for July 2025 as presented. Vote by show of hands. That's four of us, Madam Clerk. And Mr. Bridgers will now talk to us about the Collections Annual Settlement Report.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lord, I'm just dying to jump around here. Release refund report, sir.
All right, for the month of July 2025, the total report amount is $327,620.84. Of that, we rebuilt $265,438.55 with a net release of $62,182.29. There were no refunds and no vehicle adjustments over $100.
Does anybody have any questions on this report? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll entertain a motion, Vice Chair Phil, to approve the tax releases and refunds for July 2025 as presented.
Vote by show of hands. That's four of us, Madam Clerk. And now, we'll hear about the Collections Annual Settlement Report from Mr. Bridgers.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board. The, I can read all these numbers if you like or I can just, if you've got questions, I'll answer them the best I can.
I think we just go ahead and do the expeditious way there, Mr. Bridgers.
All right, for section one there, you can see that we collected $54,162,179 for county taxes and that's the current year for 2024. And then, the other delinquent taxes and prepayments of the 2025 taxes, so we've collected There's a breakdown of what that is for, over that. How it's distributed in vehicle taxes, section two, we've collected $6,53,943.43. For property taxes and charges for other jurisdictions, these are county jurisdictions, the prior districts, we collected $6,196,513.4. For the municipalities we collected, that we collect for, we collected $3,601,981.74. And for all that combined, that is $9,798,494.78 that went through the tax collector's office here. Tags and taxes, vehicles, you can see that. For the other jurisdictions, we collected $2,288,769.10. For property taxes, section five, prior years that were not collected to be charged back to the collector, county taxes, county fees, and other jurisdictions and the municipalities, a total of $2,854,83.99. For the charges that are not charged back to the collector, these are taxes that are over 10 years old and we, by law, we cannot enforce, collect those, is $26,762.14. For additional revenues, this is vehicle rentals, occupancy taxes, beer license, et cetera, was $1,388,153.99. cetera, was $1,388,153.69. For the delinquent taxpayers, types of bills there, the total of that, there were 400, excuse me, 4,567 bills that were not collected, and that total was $964,084.33. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I just, I just have one question, and I don't know that Mr. Bridgers would know. Maybe Brian, you, you might know, that the landfill user fee, is that quite a bit higher than normal, maybe because of the storm, the stuff we took in? I'm just curious. Maybe you can give back to me. I'm just curious what it normally is, and then...
The user fee would not be impacted by that. No, it's a fixed rate.
Those contractors, us charging them, so that's different.
Yeah, the user fee in, in 2425 was $88, and 2526 is $92, and that's fixed based on the number of households.
Right, so that user fee has nothing to do with the contractor.
Yeah.
Any further questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Vice Chair, I make a motion to accept the tax collection settlement report for 2425 as presented.
Let's, I'll entertain a vote, a show of hands. Madam Clerk, that's four of us. Okay, now we'll move on to our order to collect 2025 taxes by Mr. Bridgers.
So this is the taxes that were not collected from prior years, 2015 to 2024, and the total being from county taxes, prior districts, fees and charges, and municipal taxes, total
Any questions? It's the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'll make a motion to order the tax administrator to collect the current prior years' delinquent taxes on real and personal property, further authorize the vice chairman to execute the order on behalf of the board.
We'll vote by a show of hands. Madam Clerk, that's four. We'll now move on to our reports and comments with Mr. Corey Fisher-Welman from Social Services with his monthly operational report.
Good evening, Madam Clerk. All right, so just, we've been going through monthly updates of kind of where we are in terms of personnel. You know, we went through a tough stretch towards the end of last calendar year, and we've been working diligently to, to make a dent in that, and you can see there, based on when this report was done, we had 16 open positions, 10 of, or six of which had some level of offer, whether it was a final offer or conditional offer, which would have left us with about 10 open, open positions, which is a vacancy rate of about 5%, which, again, for a medium-sized county, a 5% vacancy rate at DSS is a, is a really good number. And then I looked even further today before I came over here, and it's even lower than that. I think we're at about 3.5% vacancy rate if you take into account, there's a couple of offers that have been made and waiting on those people to start. But a lot of, a lot of folks worked really hard to make this happen, so two of the positions that are listed on here that I'm really happy and, that are first time for us, is we hired a training supervisor and a quality assurance supervisor within our child welfare. A lot of our child welfare staff, just at any DSS is new, there's a lot of turnover in child welfare, it's really difficult work, so being able to hire this, this training coordinator to really help, you know, when, when someone first starts, being able to go out in the field with them, being able to, a warm hand, a face you can go see every day when you say, I don't, I don't have a clue what I'm doing, where do I, where do I need to go in the day? So I think those two folks have just started, and I think that's going to have a real big impact on our child welfare staff, hopefully lead to better retention in that area. Next is just some operational reports. This is just the MOU standards for economic services. We continue to meet our MOU outcomes every month in economic services, and I know I mentioned this last month, but like, that's something to never take for granted, it's really hard to do, and, and not every county meets their MOU outcomes every month, so really proud of the work that they do and that they continue to, to do consistently month after month, so. And then just some of our, just recipient numbers, you can see there, our total Medicaid recipients is about 28,851, and then our SNAP beneficiaries' total recipients is about In terms of our child welfare, one of the things that we've, in CPS, been focusing on is, is our transition into PATH NC. So if, if any of you were here five, probably 10, 10 years ago, when the state wrote out NC FAST, that was a, an attempt to create a statewide document management system. There were a number of counties who went into NC FAST initially, they didn't stay very long, it wasn't successful, it didn't work, it was, it was very cumbersome. So since that time, the state's been working on a new document management system statewide. You know, if you think of 100 counties all doing CPS, there's a lot of crossover between counties where someone lived in, in county A, and they had some CPS history, and now they're over here, and we're working in the middle of the night trying to find out if this house is safe, sort of the benefits of the statewide system, as we can see CPS history from across the state. So in order, so this is only for our CPS intake and our investigations are the first two groups that will go into PATH NC. Over time, our CPS in-home and foster care and adoptions and all that stuff will eventually go, but this initial group went live on August 11th. In, in order to prepare to go live, we had to send all of our CPS staff and leadership to two, two different weeks of, of training, so, you know, you can't close the doors and say, we're preparing to, to go live, so we're not taking any more reports this week, so we had all those people out of the office while continuing to, to accept new reports and work cases, so that was a pretty significant undertaking getting ready for PATH NC. I, I would say it was a successful launch. We were in group three, so we were the third group of about 15 counties to go live, and then I think by the end of this calendar year, all, all counties will be live for intake and assessments, and then we'll start rolling in, in those other areas, but so far, so good. I think it's definitely, I was in another county when the NC FAST went live, it was not so, so far, so good, so this has been a much smoother transition than, than that And then just a snapshot of our, our kids in care, you can see there, our, again, this is a, a point in time, so on this day, there was 187 children experiencing foster care, and during the month of June, we had eight children enter and, and six children exit foster care. And just to kind of piggyback off some of the stuff that Brian talked about earlier, you know, we're continuing to work to, to increase some of our foster homes, you know, the, we, we are fortunate that a large percentage of our kids are placed in kinship care, so that means they're placed with a family member or someone they know, someone they have a connection with, and there's obviously research that says kids are better off with someone they know, someone they're connected to, but I think it can be a tall ask to ask someone to, to want to become a foster parent and to take on a, you know, an angry 14-year-old in their house 24 hours a day, but one of the things I think is helpful for you guys in terms of like spreading awareness in the communities, there's lots of ways you can be involved that don't involve you having a kid in, in your house all the time, whether that's through their, Amber Vesta's organization, I can't think of their name, and then Fostering Hope, our two organizations that support foster parents and makes you support foster parents through the collection of beds, sheets, clothes, all sorts of material items that, that if we, if your nephew comes into foster care and you're willing to take him, you might not have a, a baby bed or clothes for a three-year-old, or all these things that you don't think about in that time. So these organizations are excellent in helping to collect those items and offer those to foster parents when kids come into care, so there's lots of ways you can get involved and become, and helping, helping and supporting foster care that don't necessarily involve becoming a licensed foster parent, so I think that's also, they give a lot of people to, to someone Brian mentioned, who have this desire to help, but taking a kid in your house can be a lot, but there's, there's lots of ways you can help. So if, if anyone ever approaches you and says they, they want to get involved, but they're not sure how, definitely have them reach out to us, and we'll, we'll get them pointed in the right direction and let them know the different ways they can help. Just a little bit of information about our adult services team. We continue to have a pretty significant number of awards. I think there's a lot of factors that, that cause us to have a higher number of adults in need of guardianship, you know, we have a state hospital here, I think that plays a role. So we, we have a large number of awards. We were fortunate enough a couple of years ago to, to be able to contract out a number of those, and that has significantly helped our child, our adult services staff and, and their workloads. We, we have 17 of those awards that are under contract, and then there's some data there on the right about the number of APS reports that were received during the month of June, and the, and the different ways those kind of reports were screened. And then lastly, just, I wanted to share some information, there's, this is in, in response to House Bill 1 that was passed at the federal level. This information comes from a, or information that was sent to counties by DHHS, just as sort of things to kind of be aware of as you move forward. Obviously, federal rules added the work requirement and the limited use of provider tax, which would create an, an additional administrative cost for counties, so, you know, all counties, the state included, are working through what that would look like moving forward, how, how those services would continue to be administered, and what, where, where that shift would be between the county and state's responsibility. And then this is some of that same information related to SNAP, which is the, the food benefit, so this just sort of talks to if that funding from the federal government isn't there, what is, how, how will the state, and then how will the county administer those services moving forward? So nothing too, we don't have to make changes today, but it's just something to keep on our radar and to, can you, continue to work towards being prepared for what that might look like down the road. And I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have about anything at DSS.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I've got one, just Corey, first of all, I just want to thank you guys for all you guys are doing. I think that's a good point. A lot of times when people talk about adopting a child, I mean, it's just, or, you know, foster care, it's just like, yeah, they don't know what to do, they want, they feel concerned, but they don't know what to do. Having a way where everybody can get involved or support financially, do we have systems like that set up where we can, you know, I know we're setting different things up, but where citizens can say, hey, man, I, I can't help it, maybe I can give 100 bucks to working that go, you know, in the system.
I think makes place, and also Fostering Hope is another support organization that offers that sort of material support to foster parents, where, where if someone's interested in just monetarily supporting, I think that's a good place to, to point them towards and let them make contributions.
And not always, but there is sometimes donated car seats, food.
For sure, for sure.
They maintain a pantry over at the, the social services building.
We did try to get out of the food business, because the maintain, it was difficult, but we do have a lot of car seats and pack and plays and stuff like that that we, we do house in our, in our pantry.
If, if people wish to make a financial contribution, to his point, the nonprofit model is certainly the more, it's, it's the better system that's built for that, but if there's things that, you know, all the time folks are contributing those, you know, those, those, those tools and equipment that, that helps support families.
Simple stuff like toiletries, sheets, there's things that you don't really think about, that what it would take to bring a brand-new person into your house at 3:00 in the morning, it's a lot of little things you don't think about.
Any further questions? Would someone like to make a motion concerning this report?
I make a motion to accept the report as presented.
It's vote by a show of hands. Madam Clerk, that's four of us. We'll now move to reports and comments. I'll open the floor for that, beginning with our finance director over there, Ms. Pierce.
No report tonight, thank you.
Okay. County attorney?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Stroud?
Well, absolutely, I want to say something because he made a couple of, you know, no, we're going to thank you, Phil, love you guys, we're doing great, everybody's working together, man, I'm excited.
Mr. Burns?
You may be going to mention this, I did want to bring up the upcoming conference in Pitt County, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. I'll be headed down tomorrow for a board meeting on Wednesday, and I think the balance of OSHA are going down on Wednesday.
Yes. Mr. Manager?
Nothing for me, sir.
Mr. Barrier?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
I'm good, thank you.
I just want to say I'm glad we got the Citizens Academy started, and now that we've got them all signed up and they can't get out of it, we, they can get over to Walmart and buy their school supplies before it starts, and we can introduce them to our truant officer, Sheriff Heitzman, so they better be on time and they better be there every day. And some reminders I got for you, September 1st, our county offices will be closed in observance of Labor Day. September 2nd, due to the Labor Day holiday, our pre-agenda meeting will fall on Tuesday, September 2nd, 3:00 PM. Any youth group that's interested in leading the Pledge of Allegiance at the start of our meetings can sign up via the form on the county's website. Please spay and neuter your pets, foster or adopt a pet from the Burke County Animal Services, cover your loads to the convenience centers and to the landfill, please, don't litter and pick up your trash, use the community beautifications tab on our website, www.burcanc.org to report littered areas, and most of the county commissioners will be attending, as Mr. Burns said, the county commissioners' annual conference in Pitt County from 21 August to 23 August. And we'll now move on to vacancy announcements with the clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Members of the board, ladies and gentlemen of the audience, we have the following opportunities for citizens to be engaged in county boards and committees, the Adult Care and Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, Burke County Public Health Advisory Board, Hickory Regional Planning Commission, Drexel Planning Board, ETJ Alternate, Burke County Planning Board, Partners Health Management's Human Rights Committee, the Revaluation Task Force, Morganton-Burke Senior Center Advisory Board, and the America 250 Planning Committee.
Thank you, ma'am. I think it's obvious that the, the board here encourages any type of community participation on these vacancies, if we could get any, if you're interested, please see the clerk about that, please. Next, we'll move to number 13, closed session. Closed session will be used to discuss threatened or pending litigation, to preserve the attorney-client privilege, to discuss economic development matters, and to discuss contractual matters, and to discuss personnel matters. And I will now entertain a motion that we go into closed session.
Vice Chairman, I'll entertain that motion to go into closed session to discuss threatened or pending litigation, to preserve the attorney-client privilege, to discuss economic development matters, to discuss contractual matters, land acquisition, and discuss personnel matters as authorized by NCGS 143-318.118345 and 6.
It's vote by a show of hands, please. Madam Clerk, that's four of us. We'll now relocate to the executive room.
Mr. Vice Chairman?
Yes, sir.
For the convenience of those in the audience, I want to let them know that we do not plan to take any action when we come back out other than adjourn.
If you didn't hear, Mr. Burns, we don't plan to take any action in there, and we will reconvene here as soon as the closed session is over. Okay. A proper motion was made to come out of closed session, and the manager was given directions on several items, but no action was taken in closed session. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Madam Clerk, that's all of us.
Good, good meeting.